Great, thank you so much. I will call our work session to order of June 28th, 2022. We have three items for our work session tonight. One, the first one is Richfield Community Garden Proposal. The second one is Richfield Bike Park Proposal. And then the third is a Richfield Skate Park Expansion Proposal. And I will pass it to our Recreation Director, Amy Markle.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for being here tonight. We're excited. We have three proposals for some new recreation amenities that we'd like to... Apartment. The first one would be community gardens. The second one would be a bike skills park. And the third one would be a skate park expansion. So we'll kind of look at each one individually. And we can open it up for discussion after each one and answer any questions you might have. So we'll get kicked off with community garden. So why investing in community gardens? You know, historically, we have had them be an important part of the recreation apartment for years. It was out of the airport land. We haven't had them out there for several years, and the need is still there. It's clear. Every year, we get requests from residents. Are you going to add them back? When are you going to add them back? We have an increase in high-density housing where there's a lot of residents with limited access to garden or to green space. There's also quite a few yards in Richfield that just aren't set up great for gardening, whether it's too shady or horrible sandy soil. It's also important cultural activity that has the possibility to bring a lot of community members together in our diverse community. It's part of our Climate Action Plan objectives, Goal Six, which we'll touch on. There's also a rise in food costs, so it may help some families grow their own food for less money. Also, there's a lot of positive health and environmental impacts from just working the soil. If your hands in the dirt and being outside, spending time in community garden. So if you don't remember, or you're new and didn't know, we had a large community garden out on the airport land, pretty close to crosstown. And the staff at Woodlake Nature Center managed that. We had hundreds of plots. And what we, you know, it wasn't always residents. That garden there was kind of a mix. But we did have a lot of different issues trying to manage them, which was tricky because it wasn't our legal jurisdiction. So a lot of times, as issues came up, such as stealing vegetables, flooding out other people's gardens, having open lake hold traps. The list goes on and on and on. A lot of times, the airport commission police would have to be called. So it just got tricky to navigate a lot of them after so many issues. And also, there was a highway construction project where access to the actual community garden site got pretty hard. We put a pause on it. And the predecessor, Jim and Karen Schrock, they spent some time looking at Richfield. Where can we have a community garden? I think with the mindset of that model, where we're going to have a one big garden with hundreds of plots, there really just isn't a great space for that model. So bringing it back to Richfield, there isn't a large enough area just for just that one big community garden. So we're going to look at a different model.
Yeah, so in our research, we've looked at a few different cities and their models of community gardens, focusing mostly on Bloomington, as well as touring some greater Minnesota gardens down in Rochester as well, and other ones around the metro. So a lot of these pictures that you're going to see are from Bloomington's community garden. And if you have questions, Amy and I have toured those gardens many times and would be happy to answer. And it's kind of a close model to what we're looking at as well. We're looking at having a small to medium-sized community garden in each ward. So to start off in this phase of the project, there'd be one garden per ward. Hopefully, if there's room and space, able to expand if there is also appetite for more gardening in the future. Excuse me. And then with approximately 30 plots in each garden. But of course, this will depend on the space in the land in each park that we've identified. And we'll get to those sites a little bit later. So we're hoping to have approximately 30 plots, approximately 20 by 30 feet, a site for onsite compost, so for garden compost that could turn, be turned by staff and then used back in the gardens after being processed. And then also, in addition to, as this picture shows, also having raised beds in addition to the kind of ground-level beds. And of course, raised beds would allow for accessible plots for those with mobility challenges or disabilities to also garden. So when we look at where in Richfield would these gardens go, obviously, it's a very small community. And so we had to identify specific criteria so that we knew that each spot that we are identifying would work in all aspects. And some of those criteria, they include parking, water supply, of course, the space, lighting and sun, soil accessibility in the neighborhood as well. And so we, Amy and I, worked with Chris Link over in Public Works to look at our city, identify city-owned land parks and non-parks alike. And then going through that list of criteria, really kind of just going down the list and reading out the areas that wouldn't work because of shade or because there just is no space with all the other amenities in the park. Or, you know, maybe the open space in one park is a hill. Obviously, that's not going to work as well, so things like that. And it really kind of cut down a vast majority of our options. We ended up with about six viable options, I think. And of those, six, we went out and toured those parks. And we found out that really only three of them are the best options. So our decision was kind of made for us in a way. And we have identified one area in each ward. From left to right, we have city-owned parkland. Just for familiarity, you might have heard of it referred to as no-name park. We will actually be proposing a renaming process to actually give this parkland a name so that when, if a garden goes in there, we can actually have a name that the community calls it, that the community has helped brainstorm as well. And I believe that process will be going through the Community Services Commission. And then to the south, we have Fremont Park. This area, specifically in this park, we are looking at the east side, kind of by that garage, if you're familiar with that park. So it's across the, you know, divided paved path. It's kind of just an open space. And then, of course, in Veterans Park. This one, I want to be really particular with when I describe it because I know, we all know Vets is huge. It has a lot of amenities. But we do think that there is a good spot for community garden plots here. And that, also being said, the east part of the city is, was one of our hardest parts to find, or hardest words to find a good spot for. So we are hoping that this is the best spot that we found. But specifically in Veterans Park, if you're kind of facing the shelter, it's to the left. It's that open green space. There are a few trees there currently. But it's a pretty open green space. So yeah, if you're facing the shelter and the playgrounds to your right, it's that, it's that open space to the left across the little paved path there. Those are our proposed sites.
When you say facing, do you mean like from the parking lot, like to the west?
If you're facing north.
Okay, so like between the picnic shelter and the parkland?
Yes, yeah, exactly. Down, down the hill, so you have a bit of a buffer from Portland. But yeah. So then again, more pictures. What does this model look like? Again, these are from Bloomington. This is just to give you more of a perspective of how they run their site and similar things to how we're looking at running ours. They, they also have raised beds. We are looking at putting, I believe it's crushed limestone, kind of around our beds to keep it as accessible as possible. They kind of do something else. And then that, that water tank, obviously, in the, that white tank is their water supply tank. We'd be looking at doing a similar model for our parks because it, you don't need to rely on having spigots or, you know, water supply elsewhere. You can just kind of fill the tank and use it as necessary. We would be partnering with other departments to keep the water supply full. And then fencing as well. In most models that we're aware of, residents and users are required to provide their own fencing. And so this can mean gates with padlocks. It can mean just, you know, chicken wire. It's really up to residents and what they would like to fence with. There are recommendations and requirements that some cities have in terms of specific colors to not use or a height limit or something like that. Of course, this is mostly just to keep animals out. We have talked to Bloomington specifically about issues that they might have seen with, you know, theft or things like that. And they said that honestly, the only theft that's been reported is from deer. So, so we're pretty confident in trying to emulate this program as well.
Well, you answered part of it about the fences and the gardeners provided. Are there requirements, like certain types of fence? Because I know, like I've seen the gardens at Smith Park quite a bit. And some, you can tell, like, there's some that the rabbits have chewed right through them. So I just, just wondering if there are requirements or the gardener gets to choose.
Yeah, I think we put out, similar to like what Bloomington does, we put out what we have determined to be our requirements in terms of, I believe there were specific colors that they encouraged staying away from for specific reasons. But I think it really would be, you know, up to the resident. What we would do is provide recommendations, similar to other, you know, programs that provide recommendations to residents on their organics cart, for example. But we don't tell them they have to do anything. I think the goal here is just to make sure that animals aren't getting to produce. And so we can provide recommendations. But if a resident feels that their, their setup is working for them, then I don't know if we would necessarily have a problem unless it becomes a problem. But that's, I think, further details that we have yet to work out. And then last picture, just more close-ups of, again, Bloomington site. Looking to kind of emulate the, they don't turn their own compost, so that would be a difference that we would be doing. We would be turning our own and then using our own. They kind of collect everything there and then have it brought down to the Shakopee site. But we would like to have that cycle where we can use it in our community as well. And then they donate to Veep. I don't know if they just donate excess produce, but that is something that we actually heard from our commissioners, which would be that they like the idea of having a shared garden plot where everybody can contribute. If you have extra seeds, you can plant them. You can help weed. And all the produce from that one plot would go to Veep. That's something that I believe was proposed by the Community Services Commission.
Ellen?
So just to clarify with the big water jug like that, people just like bring their own watering can or something?
Yeah, so we do have a close-up. It's not here. But basically, in this, there's no, it's no hose hookups because that has proven to be an issue. But in this metal box is the spigot. So it's just protection for the spigot, and then you fill up your own watering can.
We were visiting the site. We talked to some of the people gardening out there. And I hadn't seen this model before. So we were asking specifically about watering, and they said we're... Talked to one guy who had been gardening there for years. So there's no, like Rachel said, no hose hookups, which the other garden kind of led to problems. People forget to shut it off and they flood out people's garden. And it just get really prospered into with the water bill. This way, people are really just taking what they need. And the gardens are small enough where the one guy had a couple buckets and he would just go water on those buckets. But yeah, it seems to have worked well.
It also does help with the, obviously, like water conservation education as well, so.
So looking at the sign-up process, we limited because we only probably have 90-plus plots for the whole city to residents only and one plot per household. We would have bilingual availability if we took registration at our community center through our staff, Ellen. We'd like to give a preference to people that live in high-density housing. Also, we have our accessible garden plots for people to sign up for. And the model of Bloomington that works really well is the picture that Rachel showed you. There's a little stake. And when people come in to register, they get a sticker and a plot number. They just put their sticker over that plot. And that's kind of their... And it seems to work really well. We also get people's email addresses. One thing we talked about with the Community Services Commission, having more garden activities to kind of create a sense of community out there. So we would have ways to communicate with everyone and try to have some events throughout the year at the different garden sites.
One other note on, actually, I think it's, yeah, on this one, with getting resident emails and promoting a sense of community. This picture shows an example of a community board. And so this is used for notices of the garden. Obviously, there's a garden map at the top, but really to kind of promote that sense of, of community and to make residents who are using the garden aware of what's going on. Updates or if someone needs watering while they're out of town or things like that to foster that sense of communication as well.
And meeting my staff at Bloomington and learning more about the expenses of the community garden, we set a budget around $10,000 per garden, so a total of $30,000. And of course, the, the expense is going to be on the front end of really getting all the materials. But some of the, you know, equipment that's needed to maintain gardens, we have in-house, you know, in our Public Works Department. For example, just tilling it once or twice a year in the spring and in the fall. But a lot of the materials are just things that would be obvious, like the water tank, building the accessible gardens and the compost bins, the wood. We'd like to put out some accessible picnic tables. If, if some of the soil is poor, bringing in some, a load of topsoil so people have great soil to start off with. But we're kind of budgeting out some of these items. And I think $10,000 would be sufficient. And then also providing a community board for communication. So looking at a timeline, we'd like to start public engagement kind of later this summer, early fall, and get more input and feedback from residents, get them excited about this project. And this fall, we would be wanting to prep the sites. I do some tilling. Over the winter, we'd be able to do the construction of Public Works of the accessible garden boxes, the compost bin. And then we'd be doing the tilling and installation as soon as the ground thaws out late winter. And hopefully, opening Mother's Day weekend 2022.
So would all the boxes, would they all be garden boxes that are accessible? Or will some sites just be browned and some are accessible?
Yeah, so I think we'd want accessible garden plots at each garden. So there'd be, you know, the model of Bloomington, we have four at the site we went to. So, you know, probably two to four at each site. That way, and if the, if the demand's there, I mean, there's no reason why we probably couldn't add more. If more, more, probably starting off with two to four.
Yeah, and definitely a mix. Each, each site would have accessible plots, raised beds, and ground-level beds as well.
So a couple of questions. So just to be clear, there's no enclosure of like the overall area, right?
No.
Okay. And I was just looking at your budget. There's, I realized there's no way to like do that. But looking at like future parks capital needs, if these like seem like a permanent fixture and their general footprint is known, I think it would be preferable to have like an enclosure of the whole area. Because I am a little worried just like aesthetically in our finished parks that's close to airport land. But just like a chaos of chicken wire and stuff is not going to look great in the parks. Obviously, the gardens will make up for that, and I support doing it. But long-term, it would be nice to be able to farm fencing for the whole area. I am curious about the details of the accessible, so the plots are 20 by 30, you said? So how much of that, like when you get, when you're, when I set up for an accessible plot, does that mean I get like one small raised garden? Or I have like a whole 20 by 30 area of multiple raised gardens? Or what does that mean?
The way it's set up in Bloomington is they had kind of a long plot that's raised up. So, you know, if you have mobility impairment, you could wheel up to it. And it would be, if you, the size of it is probably comparable with 20 by 30. But instead of being wide, it's narrow.
Okay.
So you could reach in and get everything on one side and wheel around to the other side and get everything from that side. So there isn't a big wide middle. You have can access.
Okay, that makes sense. So you must aim a lot of, for each of those, right, to get a raise? Okay.
Yeah.
I know, I love the idea of having those and having them at each site. I am also a little surprised about the watering. Just like given the scale of that site, isn't it really hard to water 20 by 30? And it seems like a ton of rain to headwater.
Yeah, I think honestly, I'm not sure. We might have to revise the measurements because I know that some of them are different sizes. And I'm not sure if we were maybe taking, like, not an individual plot, but like the whole stretch. Because like, like where, let me, you can kind of see and hear, like this is not one, like a one residence garden, so to speak. You can kind of see the fencing in between. So I'm wondering if we got that 20 by 30 from the whole, I mean, it's not 20 feet, you know, across either. So let me, let's go back and we'll figure out that measurement stuff. But each plot is definitely not 20 feet by 30 feet.
Okay, okay.
So yeah, it's, and but you can kind of see, this is one of the raised beds. You can kind of see that it's definitely long versus the more square plots in the back.
Makes sense.
So it's not as wide.
And then the last comment I was going to make about Ward Two, I guess I realize your, your hands are tied. But it would have, it would have been ideal if it could have been closer to multifamily housing. Just Fremont Park is kind of an isolated, single-family home area.
Yeah.
But I don't know what your options are, so appreciate that. I also just wanted to pass on, since you're not going to Fremont Park and that garage, pass on feedback from my resident frustrated that that garage is still there and leave it unraised but still in use. It is still being used?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will pass, pass that information back to him. But you assumed it was abandoned and was frustrated that it was still there, so.
Yeah, I was also going to comment on the size. I feel like 20 by 30 is...
Yeah, I...
Okay.
It might have been the four, because they kind of, the way Bloomington had it is one big one, maybe a 20 by 30, and then it's sliced into little ones.
Right, like their whole park area.
Because I was, I don't want to out myself as not eating enough vegetables. But my wife and I have a plot that is probably like 15 by five.
Right, so it gets the whole, like, space.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
My other question was, I think this was just a one-time thing, but wasn't that city-owned parkland used for a hockey rink? Are people going to be okay with? I'm, I'm really excited about the community gardens and there's other hockey rinks. But has that conversation happened yet?
You know, I think Chris Link and I have talked about some of the issues. And I know the hockey rink brought a lot of joy to people at Neighborhood, but long-term, is that sustainable to help maintain a hockey rink in Neighborhood? There are some watering issues too, with water consumption. Things that he brought up that we were going to talk about before winter. It is a good enough, you know, chunk of land. I, I think we can have the community gardens and probably, there's other space. So if community wants to do other activities there, I don't think it would take up that whole space.
And then my, my only other comment that I think is probably not a realistic dream, but I was just curious, are there any community gardens you've heard of that just water everything for the users of it? Like have a giant sprinkler that just does that, or is that not?
I don't think that's realistic just because you're going to have different plants that need different watering schedules. And some gardeners are very, you know, particular about things. So I think that would be something that we would not be interested in taking on just for a lot of reasons. But I understand what you're talking about from like, you know, a conservation point of view and everything like that.
Yeah, I'm just picturing like the little misters at the grocery store or something. I'm like, if you had a system that could work like that, that would be easier. And then would also, we would know exactly how much water is getting used and not do it when it rains. But that would be a whole lot of extra upfront cost and then also administration of...
Yeah, no, I appreciate the idea. But I think we'll still, even with a, a take sort of system, whether we use that take or a small take or whatever, I think we'll still be able to monitor water usage because staff are going to be the ones who are filling it. So, and once we know what we buy, we'll know the gallons and stuff like that. So we'll be able to kind of keep tabs on, on each garden and also compare them to each other and things like that.
Oh, just one comment I wanted to pass along. Coincidentally, yesterday, some residents were asking me about community gardens. And when I said yes, and we're thinking about doing one in each ward, they got really excited. They thought that would be so much easier for everybody to have them spread throughout the city instead of all over by the airport. So there was a lot of enthusiasm for that.
I'll just add, this is super exciting. One of my first connections to Richfield was working with Jim Toppetsoffer on the community garden and then looking for a second location. And then it got paused because of the airport, you know, just the airport. But that was one of my first jobs as a public health professional, was to work in Richfield on supporting the schoolyard gardens, the church-based gardens, and then the potential expansion. Got involved in this mess in the first place that I absolutely love, which is Richfield, calling Richfield my home and it's so... So I'm super excited to see this and I love the idea. And then the last thing I'll say that was just editorial comment, but I know there's people that are connected, you know, community members that are connected because I think they offer yoga and some other things in our park. But I think there's a group of, you know, really avid gardeners and kind of urban farmer folks in the community. And just thinking about, as this rules out in the community, how to use some of those folks that are already interested and excited to keep it going forward and build that sense of community like you.
Had some neat conversations with Bonnie, the farmers market coordinator. There's some opportunity to partner with the U of M. They have a program where they mentor youth, potentially creating a garden where youth can grow the vegetables and then sell them at the farmers market and get somewhere. There's a lot of possibility. What are the next topics? Yeah. I think here has been talking about many parks. So just talking about some of the things that we had done tonight. What is a bike park? Why are they so awesome? Some of the goals of implementing a bike park, traveling towards a new model of connectivity with bikes. Some of the research we've done, a proposed site, some of the partners around the project, a timeline for it, budget, and then we'll have time for discussion and questions. So bike parks are new for a lot of people. And if you're unsure what they are, it's a dedicated space built for bike activities. And it allows people, you know, that are really experienced and new bikers to really hone in on their skills. A lot of them look like a skills park. And a lot of times, you'll see a wide range of ages. It's a multi-generational facility. There's people that have been biking their whole life. And then you'll see, I would add, a few researching them. I've seen like three-year-olds trying things on their bikes. So it kind of creates this cool atmosphere, bringing people together about ages and abilities in an outdoor setting. Some of the reasons that they are awesome, it, it provides us wellness connection to the outdoors, the community. It's an affordable, non-team sport. And talking with some of the Minneapolis Bike Park folks, some of the feedback they've gotten is for a lot of kids that are not in a traditional sport, it provides an outlet where you can still be active and engaged, but you're not necessarily in football or basketball or something like that. It's attractive to lots of different generations, but particularly to that special age group of eight years to 15 years old, which we're hearing, like, we want to really increase and improve our facilities for the age group so they have outlets to recreate as well. And I think for the cost, it's, it's very cost-effective. It'll provide a lot of joy and opportunity for people at the cost. There's tons of benefits to biking that I know we're all familiar with. But some of the top ones, you know, really important for today would definitely be helps mental health. It's environmentally friendly, improves balance and coordination, fitness levels, lowers blood pressure. Some of the goals of the project would be to provide a safe, welcoming amenity for our community to connect with the outdoors and also improve their bike skills. We want to introduce off-pavement cycling to the community. We've been sending, we're not always able to do that. But if you get out to tier two, tier three suburbs, mountain biking is just growing exponentially. And a lot of communities are adding mountain bike trails. Not being able to do that, we would be able to offer an opportunity for people to work on their skills and hopefully connect with their regional parks and get out and try it out. You can connect multi-generational, generations to cycling. You know, it's a sport that we see, we have really avid bike group right now at the community center of seniors. We have two, going out three days a week. And the groups are 25-plus each group, so it's, it's nice to see. It creates this healthy outlet for wellness. And the model that we're moving towards is to provide a robust network of interconnected bike parks, off-road trails, and paved paths within a bike ride from every home for everyone in the city to explore and enjoy. And one nice thing is this work would build on what's already being done in some of the cities around us. So some of the research we've already done in working with Minneapolis Bike Parks, they came to the Community Services Commission and they gave a really nice presentation, got everybody excited. We did a site visit to Woodbury's Carver Lake Bike Park. And Councilwoman Verwieland joined me for that. And Chris Link. And we were able to meet with the designer and the person who operate and maintains it and just ask tons of questions and learn all about it. I've met with all of our partners that have, that have installed bike parks and partners for this project and how they could help, help us make this happen. And then I've met with staff and we've talked about potential locations for this first bike park. Uh, and we took a lot of photos when we were out at Carver Lake Bike Park, and just so everyone kinda understands and can visually see what it is. Uh, you can kinda come in the wooden gate, a picture up on the left, it has a map and information about the park. And there's different trails that you can ride that have easy features if you're just starting to learn. Uh, they had a small circular area where he said there's three, four, and five-year-olds practicing, and then there's some advanced stuff too, where you can get on a different path and try advanced things, but there's natural features such as rocks, there's man-made features, uh, some of the ramps, and then there's things that they purchase which have a steel base, which are a little more, uh, it's a little more robust.
Rosa.
Go ahead, young woman.
Um, when we were at Taft Park with the Tree Trust, they were talking about the shade features, so after you get the bike park in place, are they thinking of maybe adding some trees around the edges so that there's more shade provided for the kids?
Yeah, and there's a picture coming up, I can show you where, um, Councilwoman Wieland and the Patterson members, but they intentionally got a, a tree at Carver Lake that they put right in the middle, that was gonna kinda grow out and shade a lot of the features.
Here's the second slide, so they have no, you'll see this one.
Okay, perfect, um, I was gonna say there. Well, they, they did have trees kinda in there first to provide shade, but they bought the biggest possible tree to kinda plop in the middle that would grow out and shade.
I think it's that bottom center photo.
In talking with partners too, we were thinking we could do something really interesting, um, you know, aesthetically, I, I saw out at a splash pad in Rosemont a couple weeks ago. The middle of their splash pad is built up with limestone and then they had really specific types of plantings in there, I think something like that could be, could be interesting. Maybe it could be a butterfly garden, you could use it for education, there's lots of things you could think of to beautify it, but yeah, I think shade would be important. Um, you can see some of the features are really simple, um, so in talking with Public Works, there's some that we can build in-house to save costs over the winter, some of the ramps, some of it's just timbers and that they would go over. There's that big tree on the left that will grow out to provide a lot of shade. Uh, so the site that we are proposing is up at Taft Park in the northeast corner of the park, and we like this location for a few reasons. Um, one is it's on the Nickomis Minnesota River Regional Trail, and we've already invested a lot of bike, uh, structure into that area, we have our fix-it station and a bike kiosk. When you go over sixty-two, um, you get into the, you know, the Graham Browns, um, bike chain, so it's easy access for people from South Minneapolis. And in talking with Minneapolis, they're looking at doing a single track at Sullivan Park, so there'd be an opportunity for people to apply their skills within like a quarter mile bike park as well. Uh, so there's a lot of good energy around bikes kind of over in this area.
Which, sorry. Um, if you are like not at all a mountain biker, single track is the like dirt through the woods often has these kinds of like wooden features over, um, I don't know, streams or.
Yeah.
Ditches or whatever.
Uh, with this site that, the specific area we're looking at is where the hockey rink is, that's close to the road, and then the adjacent field next to it. And we're kinda looking at the space spatially and it's very similar to the size Carver Lake's had in Woodbury, um, they're able to do a lot in a little space. Uh, it would be taking out an amenity, the hockey rink, um, and in talking with some folks that play brumball there, that's the main use of that, um, we would be able to accommodate groups over at Christian Park, which does have a warming house and bathrooms, whereas that one does not have that. Um, so, it would be taking away amenity and adding one, but I think we would be able again to accommodate people and this would be, you know, a much longer season, hopefully nine months out of the year, whereas brumball is sometimes two weeks. Uh, can be really short. We also have brumball leagues at Donaldson, and we. But if people wanna stay in the same ward, Christian would be the closest rink that we could do that at. Um, so just a little bit closer up, you can see the yellow shape there, that would be the site that we're proposing. Some of the project partners, probably one of the more important is Revers Park District, and in meeting with them, they are super, super excited. Um, they do bike parks, they do off-road cycling parks, they do it well, and so some of the things they bring to this project would be the expertise. They also bring funding, they're interested in funding the project, uh, with their Parks to People Master Plan, they would like this to be a showcase project where other cities involved with the Parks to People Project can see this is the kinda thing we can do together and collaborate, um, so they're interested. Um, they also have a considerable investment in trails there, so I think it would add to what they already have. We've been working with Minneapolis Bike Parks, you know, for mentorship, they've installed bike parks across Minneapolis, um, I've been in communication with them almost on a weekly basis, asking questions cause they've done a lot of the engagement, um, different styles of bike parks, and they're really excited, um, if we're able to do this. We, I've also met with Safe Routes to School, um, and they have a bike fleet, as you know, and their bike trailer, and in talking with Will, we just talked about all the possibilities of offering camps and having bikes there for free for kids, um, offering bike clubs, I mean, there's just a lot we could do in partnership, he has the bikes and we have the park. Um, and also, he provided a lot of data for me in working with students in Richfield, um, in his bike program, he said about a third of the students in the grades he worked with have never rode a bike, cause they don't have access, and he said it leads to a lot of embarrassment, frustration, low confidence. Um, so having a place where they could go practice their skills off the street would be really helpful in a safe space. And then, of course, we've been partnered with Free Bikes for Kids for years, and we do our bike giveaways at Taft, and it would be a really cool thing to give away a bike and say, oh, go try it out over here and offer some skills classes, so we'd like to continue that partnership as well. The timeline for this project, and then, you know, this is, uh, proposed and of course it's open to, to change, but this summer, we'd like to work with the designer to start designing a concept and lay out the features, um, establish a detailed budget. This fall, start to secure the funding, I think once I have that detailed budget, working with Revers Park District to look at the, the funding details. Uh, throughout the process, provide community engagement with the project. Over the winter, start to plan, um, the actual features, order the materials, some of it we can build in-house, and winter's better for Public Works to do that. Then spring and summer, prep the site, and probably summer, uh, next summer, do the installation and probably early fall, open it next year. Um, so in talking with the, uh, staff at Woodbury, their park was approximately two hundred thousand dollars and it was very similar in size. I do feel confident we can do some of the work in-house again, we have a committed financial partner, um, we're estimating our total, you know, with inflation and, um, probably be two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in bike park. And, uh, I wanted to know, Councilwoman Wieland and I went out to Carver Lake Park, we just had a great discussion about growing up in our communities and what our bikes did for us as kids, it provided a lot of freedom, you know, it gave us opportunity to go, go do things with our friends and have that independence. Um, so I've, I'm excited about this opportunity to provide it for, particularly youth, just as a place to go and, and have fun. Questions from folks on the bike park?
Um, just, just a full steam ahead, it looks really nice, I love, I love the concept, um, I actually know very little about mountain biking despite being a biking enthusiast for transportation cycling, but I know I've done bike safety education things where you learn some of the like roadway logistics of how to manage your bike, how to like terminal signaling and stuff, and although it's all really useful information and important to know, it's, it's not very fun, and especially with kids, they don't really get into it, so I kinda love the idea that some of the skills you learn here are just greater control of your bike, even though it's mostly mountain biking angle potentially lead to useful skills that you also are gonna use on the road in terms of just being really confident and in control of your bike. Uh, my only question was, so you said that Revers is participating with funding, like how much of that, do you know approximately how much Revers would cover versus we cover?
Yeah, so in talking with them, they, they said anywhere, you know, like, give me a number, I said, I would say two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Um, he said, that might be something we could do all, like, um, pay for the project, so I think we're, we have someone who's almost all in, I think if it costs more, I mean, we have to pay over, and I do have some money in park maintenance funds that we can cover some. And I think a lot of it, some of the easier stuff is stuff we can build in-house.
Great, and I really like the location, that I agree with you, that it's like a really nice setting on the trail, uh, it's got other things, it's kind of like a nice gateway to Richfield, and it's really cool to see that be more active than the, the empty, I agree with you.
Do you want to remember a handbook?
I don't have any questions, but I thought it was really cool when they said that a third of the kids had never been on a bike and that the schools were helping with that and that if we can participate as well, cause it makes me think of swimming too, that there's a lot of kids that never learned how to swim. So if we can help kids with things like biking and swimming, that's like lifelong recreation and safety things that'll help them, so I think that's really great. The fact that it's for the eight to fifteen-year-olds is really, really important, so thank you.
I mentioned too, I think there's a lot of opportunity with programming, um, talking with the various, they didn't even overly think about that, it sounds like they have birthday parties at their bike park. They have a group, um, called Bike Bellas, I know we have a group in Lakeville where it's, uh, young girls that get mentored riding their bikes, just a, a local chapter that join, I mean, that's the kinda thing we could, we could have there and start. Um, and anything we do bike in Richfield, we just get a huge response, we just did a, a bike tour of the park and no, police just did their bike with a cop on Friday night, we had a hundred and twenty. Um, so anything we put out there, we've had just a huge response back, people signing up and joining us.
Um, I was gonna add a few things, one that I think, um, I, I think the, constructing things in-house is great, and I think honestly, uh, we could do a lot more than Carver Lake Park that they did there, I think they only had, I mean, some of the simple things I'm sure they did, but in terms of the actual like constructed ramps, there were only like two or three, I think, um, and well, they had like twelve that they bought from this company. Um, so if cost becomes an issue, I think there's a ton of some good options there. And then, um, I wanted to highlight, if you can go back to the one that's got a picture of the map, um, you could kinda see this in the photos. Or, sorry, the, the map of Carver Lake Park, the little green.
Oh, that one, yep.
Um, you can kinda see it's small, but it has like concentric circles, and so, um, I know we talked about this while we were there, and then it gives people options, but I, I hope when we get to the point of designing, whether it's literally concentric circles like that or just interweaving options, I think giving people a ton of options so that it's not just the same circle over and over again is really great, and the way they did this, like each different circle was like a different skill level too, and so I think that was, um, yeah, I thought they were really thoughtful with that, um, and hope we can do something similar.
Yeah.
I'm super excited about this as well, and a couple things in terms of considerations or ideas, so as we roll things out, whether it is the community garden or the skate park or anything new, I would love to see or have us consider, especially, you know, parks is one of the main access points and connection for residents, to build community, to get that sense of inclusion, um, to connect with the city. Thinking about the signs and accessibility for language and, you know, clearly Spanish, given the population of our community, would, might be one of those languages, maybe the top language outside of English, I don't know what accessibility of languages would make sense for other languages, but just, you know, across the board for everything, whether it's the map of the garden itself or directions or for this. Um, and then, the multilingual programming and multicultural programming, so I think of things like, uh, multi-generational programming and programming for families in a lot of our communities, um, community members do things with their family, and one thing that I hear a lot is just like difficulty in finding family activities. Um, so it's more like, you know, programs for specific age groups versus, you know, have, doing a pickup game of soccer in the park or something like this, this would be a great multi-generational family type of space for programming. Um, so just thinking of multi-generational programming, um, also multilingual programming, working with, through Revers District. Um, I know that that is a, um, one of the areas that they wanna improve or expand in, and so just thinking about how to be hosting different language, um, with different community groups. Uh, it can be something as technical or specific as like there's the Minnesota Latinos and Bicicletas group, that is, they're like bikers and they could host something, two groups that aren't, you know, focused on biking, but just providing the space to say, let's do, you know, uh, biking one-on-one and exploration, you know, with Somali community members in Somalia and have a, a celebration. So it can be more technical, um, or it can be, again, more open-ended, but in terms of programming, I feel like this is an amazing opportunity to just access on all those different levels. And then lastly, again, thinking about community partnerships and who could help, um, whether it's an awesome event, like I just always think about the Dog Park, um, event that we had, and it was just like a huge party and and it was super fun and so many people showed up with this, um, how can we do that as well and build that community support, but I think of companies like QBP and, um, and Bloomington or Brown's Bicycle, you know, or Eric's here in Richfield, so there's, yeah, there's a lot of supporters, um, there's the guy that does the maps, that's, I think he. But there's just, uh, you know, community partners and then that multicultural, multi-generational in terms of programming, but also in terms of just the site and what is written in.
Okay. Fighting, wow, that's awesome. Last item we have is the skate park expansion proposal. Some of the things we'd like to touch on are some of the history of the skate park, uh, the current trends in skating, why is the expansion needed, some of the goals, uh, the proposed location, a timeline, some of the partners, budgets and discussion. The history of our current skate park, um, you know, it was established in twenty twelve. On all the surface meet tier one standards, and in skating, there's different levels and tiers, so all of our features are forty inches or lower, and when they're tier one, you don't need to staff it, and that's. When it becomes tier two, they can be all or bigger features, but you also need to staff it cause it gets more dangerous. A lot of times there is admission into parks. Um, our park is fifty-three hundred square feet and it includes, you know, quite a few cool features, we have our stair set, we have a manual pad, hubbub ledge, a grand ledge, we have the rails, banks and a flat bar. It's one of those amenities, you know, we drive by it or we go by it all the time, but we may not notice it, but it, I will say it's consistently loved there, and when I've hopped out there, um, a lot of times I do see a lot of different generations, I see little kids on scooters, I see kids on bikes, I see, I saw one guy out there with his dad the other night, and dad and son were skating, so it's cool we see, um, different ages. A good example of tier two that's close by would be the, uh, Tri-City Skate Park at the Y and C at Southdale, and that one does have an admission, um, but that has a lot bigger features. Uh, ours kinda complements the one at the Y, so that one of course is more advanced, ours is free and inclusive to all community members, our neighborhood around it has been very supportive. Uh, it's a busy skate park, and we did host a skate competition, um, twenty nineteen, right before COVID. Uh, it's also the home skate park to the Richfield High School Skate Club, and that's kinda what started this whole project, is they started a skate club, um, this past year, and Mr. Bloom, the teacher, reached out to me and um, we've been meeting with the students, okay, three or four times now, and just hearing from the students and why they want more features and new features. Uh, but the skate park's really cool, he has about twenty-five students and. Uh, but the skate park's really cool. He has about twenty-five students and, um, it's kind of breaking the percentages, but about half of them are girls and about twenty are students of color. So it's a really first group of, of students. And some of the trends in skate parks, um, it's popular. A lot of it's due to social media. And doing some research, TikTok has really made skating, uh, cool because people will post some of the tricks they're doing and get a lot of attention with that. Um, more people are just looking for affordable activities like that close to home due to COVID. Uh, there's increased women skateboarders. There's, uh, recently a movie that was out with a lot of female skateboarders. I think it's made more popular amongst women. Uh, and also just the stigma about who skateboards has changed. About seventy percent of skateboarders are younger than eighteen. So again, it's a facility that kind of targets that eight to fifteen year old, uh, student. Uh, about approximately twenty-four percent are female. So some of the feedback I'm hearing from the students is that they really would like to see more entry-level skate features, low to the ground where it's less intimidating, less scary if you fall off. Um, a lot of the kids in the skate club and their high schoolers, you know, said, we just started and the stock's way too much for us. And, and then when we've met out there, um, looking at features of the high schoolers, a lot of them, they just stand and watch because they don't want to do it. Because they're too scared. Um, so we've talked about, yeah, we need some really simple features. Um, and also for some of the younger kids, even younger, that want to just try skateboarding out. I do see there's a demand for more non-teen sports that are accessible. And we just talked about the bike park. This would be another example. So if, you know, you're not interested in baseball or soccer, there's another outlet for recreation. Um, and there's just overall an increased need for wellness opportunities for physical health. If some of the goals of the expansion would be to design kind of an innovative community space with resident input. Um, and working with Mr. Bloom, and he wanted to be here tonight in his net, but he would like to take the students from really the start of their idea to when we get it built and have them along with us every step of the way. And the whole process of how do you start with an idea and get something. Um, so I think there's an education component. We'd like to introduce more youth and community members to skating, promote creative expression. There may be some opportunity to do public art, um, in this space. We like to continue to create safe space for youth, um, and students just to hang out. Use the process again as a learning opportunity with, uh, the skate club. The site is adjacent to the existing skate park. We have an old basketball court, but there's nothing there. It's just kind of an old asphalt lot and it's level, it's flat. Um, and so we'd like to utilize that space and grow it to the west. The timeline of the project would be, uh, doing community engagement this summer. Um, and looking at some of the grant opportunities I have, it's, it's important for me to get going on the project design and budget. So I can write grants that I do in the fall. Um, so I'd like to secure the grant funding over the winter and then construct the park next summer and hopefully open sometime next summer. The project partners would be City of Skate, which I've been meeting with. They're a nonprofit group, uh, that promotes exactly what we're doing. Help coming alongside cities and organizations that want to build a skate park and mentoring them and helping get projects done for people to skate. Um, they have a bounty roll bill request for fifteen million dollars that would, if they're, if they're on the bounty bill. So if there is one, um, and talking with them, you know, they're very hopeful they would get some funding and that would be available for cities and community parks. Um, if not, there, you know, there's some other funding partners, but also the Richfield Public Schools and partnering with them through the process as well. So the total budget would be a hundred and eighty thousand. We have ninety thousand budgeted next year in our capital improvement budget. And then we would do the match through grants. The two that we're looking at is the Hennepin County Sports Facility Grant. And then we also have reached out to the Tony Hawk Community Grant Program. And they have a, a program as well that, that supports communities building and expanding their parks. Uh, so a total of a hundred and eighty thousand. And again, I think public works like the other projects, we're going to be working a lot together. Um, some of our features are similar, like they're low to the ground, kind of like the bike park features that we can house, um, some of it. So I think we'll be able to get our money to go a little farther between something else.
I just think it's a great, great project. And I thought it was great that you're working with the school district and doing some of that. And a lot of the kids use the skateboards for transportation. So if they can also then have a, like the simpler stuff to use for recreation and fun stuff. Public art is a good.
Yeah, I think, um, if there is opportunity for public art, um, I mean, you saw, we visited, uh, skate park in Woodbury also. Um, it's just asking to get graffiti if it doesn't have art on it already. Um, my, my bigger comment actually that relates to all of these, um, I, I think all of this is worth doing. It is, uh, relatively low budget impact when you consider like the almost four million dollar ice arena stuff. The three to four million, like we'll need the twenty million nature center. And I know that we, our, our budget we have for parks projects and updates and things is not huge. Um, and I guess I'm, I'm curious, uh, if, I know there are several like longer-term financial plans that are part of strategic planning. Um, I couldn't remember, is one of those also to have a longer-term like plan for parks, um, projects? So that we can keep, I mean, taking advantage of opportunities like this for small adding in smaller amenities as well as maintaining the larger ones we already have?
Yeah, that's a good question. So myself and some of our colleagues, we, we did kind of a inventory of all the, we won't be able to show it too during the budget process. Uh, we did an inventory of the park system of all the capital needs. And then we put short, medium, long term, just to help guide our process of our, of laying out the budget for the next few years. Um, and so we have some, you know, quick immediate needs and then we have obviously some medium and long-term needs as well. So it gives you a big picture, you know, it'll be nice to look at it with all of you in that process. But yeah, it's, and, you know, there's these projects that come along, um, where I think in part, in partnership, we're able to get them done at pretty low cost for how much, um, opportunity it provides for the community. So I think we'll always continue to look for that and make our funding go farther. Um, but yeah, there's, there's a lot of need. I don't know if that's to answer your question, but.
I guess, uh, just to, I, I see that, I, I forget if it's exactly five hundred thousand or, or the yearly amount that the liquor stores contribute toward parks projects. I saw, now I'm forgetting where, but, um, that like we're setting aside part of that in future years for the nature center.
Yep.
Um, and I mean, sure, we have to get the money from somewhere, but that's just such a drop in the bucket to the total cost. And I, um, yeah, I guess I'd, I'd love to see us get to a place where parks projects, whether they're smaller ones like these or like a new nature center, um, that they get more, um, I don't know, fully integrated into the capital improvement budget that they feel like they are. And future councils, as we start looking five, 10 years out, can, can always change the priorities. But that it, it certainly has felt like parks projects become an afterthought compared to like infrastructure projects, um, for streets and utilities. And those, those things are also important. I don't think we're lowering anything, but just raising it up and yeah, covering it forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. And I do feel like our park system, a lot of the facilities were constructed at a similar time. So we're getting to this place where all our buildings, our trails, our pool, our nature center, the ice rink, everything's fifty to sixty years old. So it needs major reinvesting. Um, and I think, you know, manager Rodriguez and finance manager, um, we've been sitting down and we have meetings coming up and looking at our strategy. It's a long list and how do we get it done? I think we'll have some levers we can pull and look at, um, but it is challenging. It's all the needs.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I echo your concerns. Um, I also think that we are doing good work to get there. We're not there yet. Um, we added a, a meeting that Director Markle just referenced where it's going to be both Polk Works and REC and the finance department at the table looking at the capital budget. We've also added to the schedule, this is just internally, we've also added a, a, a meeting with all directors before the budget gets recommended and sent to the council. So we're looking at the balance of the priorities. When we did our strategic planning initiatives, when we had that meeting with all managers, it's not just to assess the needs, the capital needs, but it's to prioritize them. So it's not, and, and it's a combined list. It's not a public works list, you know, with right away and the, and buildings. I mean, we gotta, we gotta start thinking about our buildings too. They're getting older. Um, and rec, it's everything. And then coming up with that funding plan. Um, and I agree with you. I looked at some of this and I'm like, oh gosh, in, in ten years, we're going to have to be looking at that. And to replace it, probably five for some of the infrastructure. And it's so sad that I'm thinking about that as opposed to all the joy that that's going to bring. But I think that we are, the reason these projects make sense is that they're really, they're, they're low, low budget. And even maintaining them will be fairly low budget. And Director Markle's worked on a really outstanding job. And I'd like to see us do that with some of the other infrastructure and getting partners to come in with us on that. So that's something that maybe we can ask Three Rivers, like is there, is, will they be there with us when we have to maintain it going forward? But yes, thank you for that. I, I think that is good long-term planning and we're getting there.
I would think there would be community support, like people would probably be willing to contact partners and encourage them and things like that. Because people have said to me, every time we do something new in Richfield, there's like a flood of people using it and it's really well received. So the demand is there and I think they'd be willing to partner with us in the community to work for some of these things.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And another thing, um, Director Markle is doing in partnership with, um, with, uh, Polk Works is to look at the usage and just to start looking at, um, you know, and are we, do we have enough users for that? Or should they, they be basketball courts? Or should they be soccer fields? So to start looking at that, but also factoring into that the maintenance of the capital with the usage.
Working with Community Services Commission this past month, we, we started looking at that inventory and what is responsible. Um, you know, I think when we added up all the cas, it's about thirty-seven million, uh, just maintaining. Are there things we're not using, like park buildings? I used for a few days out of the whole summer. Is it responsible to keep that? Or build a picnic shelter everyone can use? Starting to look at some of those facilities.
Comments? Um, I'm so glad that the liquor store roundup program was brought up. That will continue to exist.
Okay. Yeah, we're just shifting on Friday to three times.
I don't, I would love to hear the experience of the rest of the council, but I don't think I've ever been asked if I would like to round up. I just know about it and I'm like, can I please round up? And I don't see anything usually that there's even a roundup. So I just ask every time. So I, I don't know what that's like, but to be honest, I feel like there might be a really big missed opportunity there. Right? That might just be need, but it's pretty.
Also never been asked, not that I think about it, yeah.
Okay. And do you see signs up and stuff?
Yeah, I know this, but it's like, I think of like when I go to the co-op and they're like, we're reading your face about it, you know?
Yeah, it's just in your face. So what?
Yes, it cer- certainly is not the experience of, at the co-op or other places that like do it, uh, regularly. And yeah, that I, I've seen, um, it's been a while since I've been to the liquor store now. I, I feel like I've seen signs or a monitor or something, but yeah, it certainly have had several experience. I'd say seventy-five percent of the time, the staff person doesn't ask. And, um, yeah, there's not like one of those little clear sheets sitting on the counter with like, do you want to round up to the, here's the park thing we could have. I, yeah.
That's noted.
Well, yeah, we, we provide that to liquor stores and we update the monitor for them, but I think it's just a matter of the sales associate and we can continue.
And then, um, a couple, I think there was one other thing, but this is so amazing. And then I was just thinking of trends throughout all of these things. And then I'm thinking about how can you leverage the, um, listen, how can you leverage the commission to really help with some of these partnerships or external things, um, community engagement? But I was almost just thinking, you know, thinking of centering equity, what does that mean? You know, there's accessibility of the site itself. There's the directions and, and that type of thing, language accessibility. There's programming. There's, um, partnerships and outreach, again, whether it's through the schools or groups and in, and community engagement. And then there's like sponsorships and partnerships with business. Obviously, that's a lot of stuff. And I'm just like, could there be subcommittees with the commission to help? You know, um, but with all of these opportunities, those kind of core buckets, I feel like are so, so important. And, you know, I think that's kind of the goal that we're going for with Richfield is we do want to show what it looks like to center equity in everything we do. And it is, you know, super pertinent to the, the community that we serve. Um, and then lastly, and I know that this one, this, this one is focused on staff time. But every organization is under the, we want to focus and center equity. Great. Well, Richfield's the place to go. And, you know, like I feel like we just have a lot of possibility. And I think Director Markle, you've been the leader probably out of all of our departments maybe, but in really leveraging that. But everybody wants to do this work. We are doing it and, you know, we want to. But how do we leverage all the assets we have in our beautiful community, whether it's the residents, the commissions, to help us think about what that looks like, um, to making sure that we get money for all those groups that say they want to do this work?
Other comments or questions from folks?
We're exciting. Thank you so much, um, for all of your work and part of it. Maybe we'll need the council members to go out and test out the skate park.
Yeah, we'll need a document that.
The slogan for the new lowered the ground one is going to be, it's so easy even a council.
Exactly. Totally.
Except that won't be true. I'll still play something.
I think I'll volunteer for the garden. Got it. We'll send Sean to the skate bike stuff.
On a scooter.
Yeah. Simon would skate.
Yeah, for sure. Well, thank you so much. It sounds like we don't have any other questions. And so soon as we have another question, I'll adjourn our work session. Thank you.